I don't get too many calls, I'm really making calls.
Okay, it's Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. We'll call me in the order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On and on more.
Minutes of reports received and filed. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got an equal people meeting Thursday. About it.
That's quiet.
I don't have anything either.
Okay, all I've got tomorrow is our bicentennial meeting at 3:00 P.M. And don't forget, November 7th, which is Saturday, at 11:00 A.M., we're dedicating our bicentennial monument out here, so. Okay, we will move right into appointments by commission. Appointment of Eric Landworth to the City-County G.I.S. Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I move that we appoint Eric Landworth to the City-County G.I.S. Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Jason Summer and Frank Underwood to Public Works Traffic and Safety Advisory Board.
I move that we reappoint Jason Summer and Frank Underwood to the Public Works Traffic and Safety Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of Jim Asslaxson and Tom Piper to Cole County Parks Committee.
I move that we reappoint Jim Asslaxson and Tom Piper to the Cole County Parks Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any commission comments? Bidding contracts, bid award of 2020-27 courtroom remodel.
Well, the courtroom remodel, we only had one vendor put in a bid for it, and that was GBH Builder. Our recommendation is to go with them. The total is $137,585. They can start work the first of November, and then it'll be completed by January 15th.
She did have quite a few people show up at the pre-bid.
We had about, we had about eight different contractors, and only one submitted a bid.
Well, what are they doing with this?
They're turning that break room into the courtroom, and then the office right beside that break room, they're putting a wall between it.
Wall carpet paint to make it the judge's office and his recording recorder. Big upstairs fourth break room upstairs, get it. Ceiling lights, bench, woodwork, flooring, or jury. Jury room that was up around the fourth floor from maybe five years ago. When we did the public penetration from out of there downstairs. And then they're taking the cabinets out, new cabinets we put in there, and they're going to put them on the third floor in the jury room there to replace those old metal ones that are falling apart.
So they're making an office for the new judge?
Yes.
So they're not making another courtroom?
They're gonna make, yeah, they're gonna make a, so they have a judge's bench and.
So we'll be in the courtroom, okay. We take enough money out of capital then? What were we guessing it was gonna cost?
I think we were all over the place.
Yeah, we got a letter, I think Greg sent it from GBH, that said it'd be anywhere from 115 to 130.
Okay, like this is, I thought it was gonna be more than that even, so.
We try to keep the high dollar with what we have.
I think we should get some Brazilian. Yeah. I'm fine with it.
Good with it, Jeff?
Yeah, I was just trying to refresh my memory with all we were doing. I didn't see any plans. I know we talked about it before, and I was surprised that it actually came up at this amount. I thought it would be more than that, too.
Not gonna be done by January 15th.
You have a contract today?
No, not today.
I move that we award the courtroom remodel to GBH Builders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we do these others here?
Sure.
Holiday calendar and two budget adjustments.
Yeah. Rule of 2021 holiday calendar.
Do you have a court order here for the calendar, for the holidays for 2021? They are the same as this year, and they correspond with the state of Missouri, except for a couple of them. And we still have the one plugging holiday in there. So I'd ask you to approve it.
I still don't see opening day or deer season on there, but.
Got to take one to stay out.
We can add any you want.
The day of, oh, the Super Bowl, the day after the Super Bowl, that's the other request.
I move that we approve the 2021 holiday calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First reading of budget adjustment number 21.
This is for $10,000. It's the health department. It's their WIC Nutrition Services. It's additional money they bought in, so we'll put it in their expense line, and no action today. We'll hold it for 10 days.
Okay, first reading of budget adjustment number 22.
This is also for $10,000. This is a grant, the election COVID response grant. So again, no action today. We're gonna hold it for 10 days.
Okay. We will go back to approval of CARES Act application request.
Okay, Julie, I'm gonna let you take over.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, um, we are ready to get started for today. Just a couple of items I wanted to mention. So, one thing on our staffing updates, I can't remember, I think we talked once before, you know, as we, BKD, has moved through all of these CARES Act funding issues and working with different jurisdictions and communities. One of the things we've really been focused on is trying to have a local presence as much as possible. And so, you know, Teresa has stepped up to our Wichita office to support Leanne and I. She's doing a really great job, so, as is Leanne. And so, one of the things we're doing is we're asking Teresa to kind of take on that project management role that Leanne was working on. And then Leanne is gonna be working on some projects in Texas. So, Leanne will be helping kind of in the background, and then we also have some additional support for Teresa. I'm still here, a veteran, so hopefully that's a good thing. But I did wanna just, you know, if you notice, Teresa is here and Leanne's not, but it's really just a function of us trying to provide the maximum service that we can in our communities. So, with that, I'm gonna move into our agenda, and I'm gonna kind of rearrange things just slightly, and I think it will help in going on some of the funding recommendations. We'll do the funding recommendations with Leanne. And if you look at the third bullet point, I know this was a topic last time we met, and we talked about the public higher education, I'm sorry, higher education institutions. And so, I wanted to bring up that originally our Phase 1 methodology was that not-for-profit and public higher education institutions fell into the not-for-profit area. And then the for-profit higher education institutions fell into the, or were categorized as for-profit small business area. So what that means is that currently, the methodology that is still kind of what we're operating under is public higher education and not-for-profit universities, schools would get eligible for a maximum of $25,000, and for-profit would be eligible for up to $5,000. So, we could obviously, you know, you all can change that. You can determine whatever limits or additional amounts that you want to fund. As we go forward, our recommendation still is the same, that it would stay at this level, really for consistency as well as knowing kind of what we have on the horizon in terms of testing and some of those things. But if you see that there may be a need for additional funding, you know, that's certainly in your purview. So with that, I just wanted to kind of stop, let you ask questions, see if you want to continue down that road, or if you might want to reconsider that allocation methodology.
Well, we looked at the higher education, you know, Lincoln, and then we looked at all the sub schools that are here, like, I think, I don't know, Wayne Woods and.
Columbia College.
Yeah, so, again, Lincoln University would be the only public one. The rest of them are private, as far as I understand. Is that right, Julie?
Yes.
So, just kind of looking at the spreadsheet here, so you have in the column of schools, reimbursed public schools, $910,000, and that was all Jefferson City Public Schools, was it not?
Correct.
Have we received any applications from Blair Oaks, or Russellville, or any of the others?
Teresa, do you want to take that? I think we did have maybe a couple.
So we had, we had applications, that's not all Jefferson City Public. That's R1 and R2, I believe, are the other two in there as well. Sorry, R1 and R5.
There's four, Jeff City, Blair Oaks, R1, R5. We've had some applications from R1.
Right.
Jeff City Public Schools, you guys approved last time. We're still waiting.
So the, the $900,000 that we approved for online learning, wasn't that for JCPS?
Yes.
Is that not in this spreadsheet, or?
I'm not sure if it's in here yet. We haven't signed the sub-recipient agreement yet.
So was that 840, 195, is that?
Yeah, that includes the 807, 204.
Because Jeff City Public Schools was limited to the 807.
Oh, okay.
Because of the enrollment numbers.
So it was 807?
Yeah.
Is what we, okay. So I was just looking at this reallocation number up here, and under schools, under 10-6 of 20, Phase 3 reallocation, and just, just kind of wondering where that, that's a half million dollars that we reallocated already, or is that just? I guess I'm just asking.
Sure. So when we moved to the $4 million, kind of think about the $4 million overall allocation there that's on your agenda, and when we broke that down into kind of big picture, the million five for healthcare, a million for cities, you know, the not-for-profit, all those different breakdowns. So essentially, what we did is we just adjusted the allocations by category to get them to those total numbers. So that kind of what the current allocations were, so at this point, the current allocations are the million dollars for schools based on the student enrollment, one and a half million dollars for the medical centers, nursing homes, and any testing and tracing. The cities are a million dollars, not-for-profits, $300,000, small businesses, and in this case, for-profit universities, or higher education would be $200,000. And then that still allows for the amount for the internal county funding as well as the contingency.
So are you saying that we took that half million dollars from schools, and we put it into medical healthcare?
Well, yeah, essentially, that is what we did, and we can always shift some of the additional money either from the contingency, because at the time, we weren't really getting additional requests from schools. So when we, you know, when we looked at and made that recommendation, that's kind of based on what we were seeing. If we decide we want to move, you know, money back and forth from contingency or internal county, we can certainly do that, if we want to increase more support to the schools.
So I thought that we were gonna reallocate some of the private school funding into other or something else to cover the contact tracing.
Well, wouldn't that contract tracing go into the medical and healthcare profit? So, we kind of did, it's just more, more, the private schools were the 250, but we added an extra $500,000 to medical, and that's where the track, tracing people would come from.
Well, but all that's running through health.
Yes.
That should be internal.
Yeah, should be internal.
Well, we're helping more people outside of, you know, internals, so that's why we put it in general health. We had two different allocations, basically internal here, but then stuff we bought like for EMOs that they supplied to the fire stations, that they supplied to other people, we put it in the overall countywide stuff, not just in internal.
And unallocated? Guess I'm just trying to figure out where this stuff's going.
Oh, I think that's maybe.
So what, what was the number for contact tracers?
Kristen, do you know what that application is? Or we just sent you that?
It's, it's on the funding recommendation.
Looks like 90,000.
It is in the D section.
Yeah.
92, 259.
Yeah.
And that again was just an estimated guess on how many hours these people would work and stuff, and the equipment we needed to buy for phones and printers and whatever Brian needed to get this working. So maybe those questions will get answered as she goes through the budget stuff, Chris, I don't know. I can give you an account spreadsheet of everything you guys have approved every day and how much that is. Or everyone.
Boy, it said we were gonna use some of the money from the private schools for contact tracing, so, I mean, it's still, it's still what it is.
Yeah, and if we want to recategorize that as, as being under the school funding, we can certainly do that.
I don't care that we reallocated, I just, we just need to track it somewhere, and so when we just move a big lump sum, it's, and then I would think, I can't imagine that the schools are done asking if there's more money there maybe at R1 and R2 and R5. Have they used their maximum?
R1 has. I'm not sure the other two have. I know Jeff City has. I want you to approve this sub-recipient agreement that we'll have, based on the limits we put, based on, doesn't mean they won't come out.
Yeah, and I believe, you can correct me on this, Teresa, but the remaining amounts for the public schools there, that $27,000, that was based on the population, so that's the amounts allocated, but not yet requested.
I see.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with BKD's recommendation to do the $25,000 for the higher education limit and for the $5,000 for the private higher education?
So, do we know who that applies to? I mean, is, is Lincoln a not-for-profit? Is Columbia College? I mean, I mean, how many higher education facilities do we have in Cole County?
Teresa, I know you were looking at some of those. I thought the only public one was Lincoln University, and there was three or four of the.
Yeah, the only one I saw was Lincoln University, and you said something about William Wood. So I'm not sure if that's public or private, I don't know.
They're private. William Woods, Columbia College, they have campuses here, but they're, they're private institutions.
Yeah, so, I mean, Lincoln seemed like, from what I could find, was the only public college in Cole County. So, that's just from Google searching and asking Debbie and those guys, too.
I mean, kind of mental business, I didn't realize they're closed here, but they're closed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What was Lincoln's student population?
That I don't have, Teresa. Did you find out the population for Lincoln?
Or enrollment?
Or enrollment.
Yeah, I, I did look that up. I don't know if I, I don't know if I wrote it down, though. After I found out it was the only one, so I couldn't really do it against any other schools, kind of my plan, and then, let me see here. Yeah, it's a total enrollment, and this was from 2010, is 2,300.
2020, it says 23, 23. I don't know how many are on campus, off campus, or what the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that, that's, that's not correct. It's, my computer's doing some things, 3156. And I, I don't know the split between on campus or off campus.
I'm sorry, I can't remember. Did we get an application from them, or anything on that?
Yes. Yes, we do have an application from Lincoln University, and I asked them to give a, give me a little bit better breakdown about how they want their money if they do get it, and I have not heard a response. I will, I can circle back with her, though. I sent that through, I think last Thursday, maybe, or last Tuesday.
What'd they have, 25, then another 12,500, or?
Oh, the two applications were.
Yeah.
No, it, it's one, it's one application.
One application.
If you would like, I mean, we can, we can kind of noodle on that a little bit, and we can move into the funding recommendations, so you can kind of see what's on tap, and, you know, then we can always close and determine if you need to make any changes if you're bored.
You guys want to go ahead and come back to that? Sounds good, Julie.
All right, and Teresa, I'm gonna ask you to lead us through the recommendations today.
All right, sounds good. So Jefferson City has not sent the new application, just showing the payroll items just yet. She sent me an email yesterday afternoon just to get some clarification, so I was expecting that here pretty soon. So right now, I still just have the old applications on there still. I don't recommend that we approve any of those today, but just wanted to keep those on there until we do get that new application. So I'll just go ahead and move on to that D-0503, and that is that contact tracing that Kristen and Debbie were talking about. Yeah, this is just an estimate right now. I think we've talked about this before, so I don't know if there's much more to say on it, if Debbie or Kristen had anything to add.
No, not really.
So I think Brian's asking for more phone extensions and stuff, and that's for our contact tracers. Do we have that included in this cost?
Yes, there's 7,000 in equipment, and then the rest of it's all payroll.
Okay, very good.
It's all in this?
Yes.
And as those costs get expended, we can go ahead and include those as, you know, so that you know kind of where we are in that, that process of utilizing those funds.
Yes, the payroll that we're working on for next week is, has our first people in for doing this.
You guys good with that? Move that we approve D-05-03.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got a question over here.
On this, this first one of these CARES funds or whatever, have you all made all the schools notify them of these? Okay. So they haven't been notified, and so if they have not applied for funds, then it's.
Schools were our first priority.
Yep.
Yeah.
I figured so, but that's why I'm gonna call Dr. Jones, he was busy, make sure he, if they're having out money, make sure that everybody's.
Yeah, they've all been, they've all been meeting, too. Yeah, so.
All right, Teresa.
Okay, so we'll move on to the E section, which is the healthcare providers. E07 is that mobile testing unit. Again, that was gonna take five to six months before it could get there, so I didn't know if you wanted to keep that on there for now. If something changes, just, we'll leave that on there. I'll just keep going with here, so E, 1910, A, B, C, and D, those are the cap region expenses broken out now. Again, those are 56% Cole County. I went ahead and put the eligible cost as the total amount, so you guys can decide if you want to break that off from the 56%. And when I was looking at what Tom sent me, I was having a little bit of trouble with some of the supplies, so that's why you see that 84, 801 in the incomplete potentially eligible column. I'm guessing those are probably eligible, but it wasn't, it wasn't really easy to tell from the descriptions in his detail what exactly those were for, so I wanted to circle back with him before I put those up into the eligible costs. And I'll, I'll go back through the 1977 as well. They, St. Mary's went ahead and got back with me, and they said that, I'll go ahead and just read, read her email. We are doing approximately 100 tests per day, and Cole County patients are approximately 30% of all of our patients. They don't have the county information specific to the testing performed, and she does say, however, please note that the expenses incurred for the testing are incurred by St. Mary's Hospital, which is in Cole County. So we've gone through those last week, but yeah, they, they do say 30% is approximately what those Cole County residents are. And then the last one is gonna be the Compass Health two-day testing period, which we took the $100,000 one off. And this is the new application that they presented with those updated costs, if that was something that maybe in the future you guys wanted to undertake. So, I'll leave it up for questions on the healthcare providers.
Yes.
I got a question on this, you know, testing and this cost. I know, like, in Columbia, they have free testing, you know, occasionally or what have you. And I stopped by up here by Capitol Region the other day to see what is required if a person wants testing. Well, you have to call your doctor, you have to get it, you know. With any of this CARES money, is there gonna be a free testing day that they're looking for?
October 27th, from 9:00 to 5:00 at Assembly of God, you just have to register, and then there's another one in November. So, these you have to, you know, have a note from your doctor, or from, yeah, but, yeah, free, October 27th will be. But yeah, free, October 27th will be for, if you would want to go and get tested.
I just have not heard of any, you know, free testing day.
Yeah, we, the guard did it this summer over at the old health department. And, but again, you know, what, what Boone County and what, what university hospital, you still have to, you have to have your doctors. So they're, yeah.
Talk to Christie about if it, maybe it is. I was trying to get to the health department's website to see if those days are out there in those locations.
I know the 27th is. We just got that email. That's Assembly of God, 9:00 to 5:00.
That's a DHSS thing.
Yeah.
It's not related to county.
Yeah, that's just, but...
So, and, I mean, I'm just wondering, but my priorities are long-term stuff, taking care of people that are sick, taking care of the Cole County residents getting tested. So not just a free-for-all community testing. And I think that's wasting, wasting our stuff on, on things that aren't necessarily needing to be tested if they're, if they're just going because they want to. And they go every day. So I'm more concerned about the sick ones and whoever's needing to be tested. But this other ones, there's two of them, right? The community test thing, the one you were talking about. And then there's a second one, too.
Well, yeah, so far Christie sent out the one for the 27th. And then I think they're scheduled to do it again in November. I don't know if she knows the, the date or...
Yeah, she mentioned the date. I thought it was like the 7th or something, November.
Those will be for the public if they want to. But you still have to register, I think, with, there's an email or something.
I'll see if she can see it right now. I'll talk to Christie about the...
Yeah, I just know that the 27th, she had emailed us today or yesterday.
Yeah, community testing events. Yes. First Assembly of God church, October 27th, from 9:00 to 5:00. And it's got registration. Yeah, it's on our county website, the health department's, under COVID.
Yeah, I think there's a second one, too.
Yeah, it's on in November, first, November 5th or 7th or, yeah. First part of November.
It's just a link to the DHSS.
I can't do cap regions, but, you know, regardless of whether it's 30% or 70% or 100% Cole County, I still think testing is our first line of defense. And St. Mary's, this is money, your expenses they have incurred, so...
And they've also got another money, too, so...
This is just testing.
Yeah, they've still got another money.
So are any of these ones you want to move forward on? Or do you want to pull off?
What do we have total allocated for them?
For the healthcare part was 25,500.
What was it?
1.5 million.
And if you take the 328,635 out, that mobile unit, you're looking at 699,881 and for Capitol. And then St. Mary's, 319,892. Is that right?
Yes. So that's a good point, Debbie. I mean, maybe one, one question to help me through this is, do we want to take out the mobile testing at this point? Do we want to go ahead and take that off the table? Or continue to leave it on?
It's going to take five or six months to get.
I, yeah, I'd almost remove it.
I think we could find something used, probably. It's already built. I don't think anybody's looked at that, so.
So if they wanted to reapply or update their request, they could certainly do that. But at this point...
Right now, we're just going to the end of December. But if, I don't, I don't foresee COVID being, December 31st, COVID's going to end. So everything could change at the end of the year. So I...
I mean, I think, I think it can be useful if we can just find something that would work. But, but obviously, in that timeframe, you're not going to get something specialty built. But maybe you can find something that works that may not be the full amount of the money, but...
And I'm going to correct my totals. I thought that 328 was in there for Capitol Region. It does not look like it is. So Capitol Region is the 317, 114, the 505, 375, and the 206, 028. Pitch it brighter, too. The million, 28,000. And then potentially that 84,000, 801, that's still in question, with getting more detailed information.
Did we ever find out how many they're testing?
50, total, how many?
150 a day for cap region, is what he estimated.
And then what was St. Mary's?
100.
So they're doing 50% more, but they want three times more amount of money. 50% more testing is all. I'd really save some back, too, for more testing coming up. Because if the flu season comes around, we're going to probably be wanting more testing available. And if we have to stand something else up, we need to have the money to do that. And I think Boone County or, who is that, Boone Hospital is doing 200 a day. And I think we're fewer people, so I'm going to figure something out here. Just don't know about the efficiency.
The one thing, just as an option that I could throw out, is I have seen, like, you know, I'm going to start with a number, like a 20%. It's not really an advancement. But, but let's say it's one of those things where we're going to, we're going to fund 20% of this request. And then they have to come back with, you know, showing them the money, showing, you know, some results to get, you know, additional funding. It's a little more complicated, but it is an option if, you know, if it's something that you don't want to fund everything at once.
I don't really want to fund everything at once. But still, we still got a lot of time to go to do testing. And I think testing is a, a priority to make sure we have something possibly long-term. And then if we don't use it, if something happens, we get a vaccine or, you know, it slows down, we can go back and reimburse for this stuff later on. But once we give that money back, they're not going to give it back to us.
Yeah.
That 20% that they're recommending maybe is Capitol Region would be 205,703. And St. Mary's would be 63,978.40. If you guys want to prove that, we can get the sub-recipient agreement stating that fact, that 20%.
So you're saying 20% would be, how much for Cap? And for St. Mary's?
63,978.40 cents, based on what they're...
So we're going to give Capitol Region three times the amount of what we're giving St. Mary's. And St. Mary's is doing 2/3 amount of testing. So maybe we give St. Mary's more money because they're getting more done per dollar.
If you see on their list, they're buying a machine there for more than half of that money. So there's not all about how many testing they're getting.
I'm looking at dollar per test, so that's where I'm at with it.
But they are buying that.
There's 1,000 different ways to look at it. So I'm just one.
Yeah, Cap Region is sending away their tests to LabQuest to get run. And St. Mary's did buy that machine to run their tests.
Which they're spending half a million dollars for the lab test processing versus a testing system for 150,000, so... Just seems like there might be some better decision-making there. But that's just one way to look at it. That's why I'm looking at it.
Yeah, or that percentage is just another way of looking at it. You can go with the flat dollar amount. You can do whatever you would like.
Right.
Actually, that's a good point, Debbie. I mean, the other thing, especially initially, there's, you know, you could pay X number of dollars per test or something along those lines and, you know, start the funding there to at least get something to them.
Yeah, I think I have the test numbers for Cap Region. I don't know if I have the total test numbers for St. Mary's. I don't think I have, but I just got the estimated daily testing from them. So I could go back to them and get that, those numbers.
But if it was something where, you know, it's $100 a test or whatever, the number, kind of similar to what we've done based on population for schools, is that we agree that we want to fund X number of dollars per test at this point. Go that route. Again, another option.
I think one of them, basically, they say it was about $100 a test.
Yeah, $100 per test. And this is just for, oh, sorry, St.
Well, that might be, that might be a good solution for right now, is just get the total number from both hospitals and, and just do this as a stopgap. I mean, yeah, you don't know what, what's going to happen next month, what's going to happen in December. So, but at least we're doing something for them. Because, I mean, the testing is, you know, it's front line. That's, we do away with testing.
That's kind of my point, though. We can always go back and reimburse for this, if that's already happened. But if we have to go outside of this and get more testing going and amp it up, we're going to want some money in there to do that with.
We'll still have that, though, in the surplus.
You're going through a million and a half here right now. And we've got 2 million in surplus. I don't think there, there's going to be near as much left in there as you're thinking.
And I believe most of these expenses are marched through August 30, somewhere in that range. So however many months that is marching.
We don't have as much going on there because...
Six months.
We didn't have schools opened up. We didn't have businesses opened up. Everybody's going about their business now, so we're going to do more testing. You're going to have more cases. It's going to happen. So we flatten the curve like they asked us to do. And I agree with you. Testing is one of the best ways to know what's going on with it, so... And I'm fine with picking up either a number or a percentage and, you know, trying to get them some to start with. But I'm not for doing all of it, which this covers all of it, the million and a half.
So I'm going to throw, throw out another option for you. One thing you could do is, let's say you said, out of this million and a half, I want to fund, let's just say, a third of it. And so let's say that that's 500,000. Then you could take that split and say that, you know, at this point, we will fund the number of tests. So again, let's say it's $100 a test. And then it just gets allocated to the various applicants. If it's more than the 500,000, again, it's just a pro rata share that they would get. So that way, you're kind of, for this round, this week, and it could be 25%, it could be any number you want. But you've kind of kept, here's your exposure, I'm going to pay this. I'm going to allocate those dollars based on the number of tests. And that's just on a pro rata share. And then that way, you, you know, you haven't over, I'm going to say exposed, but you haven't, you know, spent all your money at once. It still holds a little bit back. So that would be another option that you could consider.
Didn't they say they were getting like $90 reimbursed per test? The cost was 100, $90?
But yeah, at Cap Region, yeah, they get $100. And then they get $90 reimbursed. So that's just for the actual testing, sending it to the LabQuest or LabCore or whatever the company's called. And getting that test run, that's what they're getting. So that does include supplies for the actual test itself and people working the test site and things like that.
I know St. Mary's expenses are above and beyond what they've been reimbursed, correct? Is that, is that the same for Cap Region?
Yeah, they have not been reimbursed for what they're asking for here, for, from other methods, from other funding sources. So yeah, if you, if you look at the, the breakdown, the lab test processing, that's the 505. That's the lab, that's the $10 per test. So however many they've run, 50,000.
Do you like the idea of doing a third? And then figuring out how to do that third, the 1.5? Do you like the third part? And then maybe figure out how you want to base it from there? Just to, it's, it takes a while still to get the sub-recipient. And then before the hospitals actually get the check in hand. So here we are, it's almost, well, middle to late October, so.
I like it. I have to recuse myself on Cap Region, so I'm really kind of...
Trying to stay out.
Yeah.
Got some stars by this one. Sure.
Okay, I stepped ahead, so you may have already covered it. But you were talking about that one of these institutions bought a machine, which drove the cost up, in essence. Well, isn't, to me, the whole issue with this testing is if you can't get rapid results, what good are they? I mean, when you do a test, that's a test for that moment in time. You go downtown or go to the grocery store, you know, you may contract it then. So isn't expediency of getting results a big issue?
I'm not sure. Is this a rapid testing machine? Or do you know, Teresa?
I don't know. I can ask. I don't know. I don't know. I can ask, but I don't know.
You understand my point?
Yeah, but then they all CDC and how much those are accurate, how much they're not. It's all, yeah. I know.
There's a bunch of different ways to do it. I'm not really ready to make a decision on that today.
What would you like them to get for you to help you make that decision?
I don't know. We just threw out about four different options that we can do and allocate. We can allocate it all and spend it all today. We can divide it up into a certain amount, a certain percentage. We can do a certain percentage of the allocation. I'm not even hearing that they're really testing, what'd they say, fifty-six percent for Cole County residents?
At Capital and thirty at Saint Mary's.
Thirty, thirty percent?
If that's what I remember. Is that what she said, Teresa?
Yeah, thirty percent at Saint Mary's is Cole County and fifty-six at CAP region.
We're the only testing facility in central Missouri, other than Columbia. So these are people that are working in Jeff City. They're shopping in Jefferson City.
They're getting the doctor a visit here, so they have to be tested here and do a visit here.
Yeah, it's, it's...
You know, it's not really...
Yeah, we're gonna say, oh, we're only gonna give it to Cole County citizens.
I didn't say that. But I am taking Cole County first.
Well...
And where are these people from? Do their counties not get money?
They don't have care, they don't have care testing.
But that's fine. They still got money for, for their counties to go get tested somewhere. So they're gonna send them here, and we're supposed to pay for them to get tested?
They want to come to our facility. You tell us, and we can go past this, but that's gonna come back up Thursday, so if there's something...
We can bring it up every week and tell them, right, make a decision. I don't know. I haven't made a motion. Chris hasn't made a motion. I, you've thrown some other ideas out there to chew on, the percent of the allocation, a percentage for each one. Just because we have that money there does not mean we have to spend it today.
All right, Julie, you can go on to the next section, then.
I'm just one.
I can go back to them and get their total test, too. I'll get that for hopefully next, next meeting.
Okay.
How many are they testing for people that have...
We'll move through the, to the not-for-profits.
Hang on, Teresa.
I mean, there's a lot of questions on those, too. If you want to ask them how many they test for people that have to go to the dentist or whatever, too. I mean, there aren't tests that have to be tested. I mean, I'm more, more worried about sick people that needn't be tested, and that's why I'm struggling with a lot of this. And I think they're being reimbursed. They've gotten money from the government and are ready to cover this stuff, so. How many millions of dollars did they get? Do you remember? Like thirty-three million, something like that?
No.
You can go Google it.
No. This, these are expenses above and beyond what they've been reimbursed.
Yeah, we asked them that question in the application. Is there volume that's still down? So Teresa, as much information you can get from the two hospitals on their testing, percentage, number of tests, people in Cole County, anything you think is relevant to... Can you think of anything else, Joe? You want to ask them while she's contacting them?
On, on the application, they say previous funding amounts was for six point eight million. It doesn't say exact sources, though, for CAP region. And I can look up Saint Mary's, too, if that helps.
Okay, so there's an answer already that they've, they've gotten a substantial amount of money, Joe.
Saint Mary's received thirteen point nine million, almost fourteen million. Again, doesn't say exactly where that's from. I'm guessing that's COVID-related, but I don't know for sure.
But these are expenses above and beyond that, right?
Correct, correct. These are, these are expenses that have not been reimbursed by other sources. And they have to attest to that. All right, well, I'll move on to not-for-profit if everybody's ready. Really only had one new application in this section from last time, so I'll just kind of go down with the ones that, that we're bringing up that are eligible. So we've talked about Lincoln University, so we still have the twenty-five thousand eligible to approve there for that maximum amount. Again, they haven't really come back and given me a breakdown if they want it between distance learning or if they want the contract tracing. I'm sure they'll have plenty of expenses in, in the contract, contact tracing or those kind of testing expenses as well, so. But I can still go back to them and get that information if that's what you want. Girl Scouts of Missouri Hard Land, I still haven't gotten a good answer for my payroll question, just to, to make sure that those people are substantially diverted to, to a COVID-related activity, so I'm still working through that one. But if, if in the meantime you wanted to approve, they did have some telework technology that, that is eligible. And then the last one, this is for the Common Grounds Community Building. What they're proposing is some assistance for people who've lost their jobs or had reduced hours for COVID. So I went back and forth with them a couple times, just kind of getting a good idea of what they're doing. They do have an application process that people will fill out to say, yes, I've lost my job due to COVID. They have to check a box, what kind of assistance they're wanting. So they're just giving out basically some assistance for rent or utilities for those people as they deem fit. So this is one of those where they're responsible for that process as far as that goes, for actually giving the money out and things like that to those individual people. Cole County would only be responsible for making sure that they have processes in place. So they did send me that application, and I do have that application, and it does have that COVID checkbox in there, which is kind of the, the demarcation line that they have to be, be asking that these people have lost their job or had trouble due to COVID, and that's why they, they are getting the assistance. So that's how that one's working. They, they just asked for the flat twenty-five thousand, so that's what I'm bringing forward today. So that's, that's what we've got for not-for-profits, so happy to answer any questions you have.
So this Common Ground Community Building, what's the organization? Is that the organization's name, or?
It's a, let me look up, because it was a, that was the DBA of it, two-six-two B. Jefferson City Area Community Services.
Does it have a location on that application?
Yeah. Do you want the address?
Yeah.
Ten fifteen East Atchison Street? It looks like it's right next to Lincoln University on the map.
Is it affiliated with Methodist Church right there?
Um, doesn't say anything about that. Just has the Jefferson City Area Community Services DBA, Common Ground Community Building.
Have they already built the building?
It's a building, right, and they're just soliciting money to applicants for rent or anybody that's lost their job?
Correct, correct. They have to fill out an application, and then they do that, that work for what they need, and then making sure that it is COVID-related.
That's where Homer's used to be.
Oh.
Think that's that one they changed over and just made it into a meeting space?
See, I only, what's the Show Me Curriculum Administrators Association?
And the one that you're not bringing forward yet that you're looking for information on?
Oh, okay, that's not coming. Never mind. Never mind, never mind, never mind.
That's okay, that's okay.
I'm just looking at, like...
But if you want to know more about it.
I'm good for Lincoln. I don't know. I don't know about Common Grounds.
I just don't know a whole lot about those, them. I've never heard of them before.
Do you want to table those for next week?
So I'm fine with the one for Lincoln. All we did was change that one to the, because I think before they were only eligible for five thousand, correct?
No, they've been eligible for the twenty-five.
Okay.
The whole time.
I thought that's why we punted it to this week.
We, I think we punted it just to see how you guys, if there was other universities in the area that might want to have a different allocation for or something like that.
Well, if y'all will find more about it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with Lincoln as well.
Yeah, I am, too.
So I move that we approve F dash zero zero two one zero for twenty-five thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it looks like that's the only one in that group, so we'll go to the next one.
Okay, so small businesses, I just have one that we're bringing forward today. This was just their rent payment during, during the shutdown, so the, their rent payment made up the entirety of the five thousand maximum that they had, so. I mean, that's, I don't know if you want to know more about the organization or anything like that, or if that's just for not-for-profits, but...
How much have we spent in small businesses so far?
Not much.
So just the... I don't know what that total is.
Julie, can you...
How much have we spent in small businesses?
Oh, twenty-six, nine twenty-six.
And we had...
I'm sorry, twenty-eight, nine twenty-six.
Okay, so we got two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got a hundred and seventy-one thousand left.
I'm good with that one.
Me, too.
Good, Jeff?
Yeah.
Move we approve G dash zero two five four eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's all the recommendations I have for today. Was there anything else you would want me to get from the Common Grounds people? Any more details on that?
Do you want any more background on that, or are you just gonna do your own background on that?
We can just know a little bit about them.
Yeah, who their director is and what their organization structure is like and how they're gonna spend the twenty-five thousand.
Did you get that, Teresa?
Organization, now, structure, how they're gonna spend it.
Who the director is. Who the director.
Director?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've been open there for a while.
Yeah, a couple of years.
It's associated with that, sure.
I haven't heard a whole lot about them in a while, so I can't really know.
Just to go back up to the, the...
Schools?
Hospitals?
Oh.
There was that two-day testing period. Do you guys want to just do away with that one, too, the six to three thousand, three-ten?
I think for right now, I would.
And they could reapply if something changes. I mean, we have those two other dates.
That was the community testing, right?
Yes, the two-day testing.
That was my compass, though. Yeah.
But that was just community testing. That wasn't a, more testing than sick people that just aren't able to get in or whatever to help take the pressure off other places.
Yeah.
Yeah, not for community testing right now.
So Julie, do you need a denial for, to take that one off, or are you good?
Yes, yeah, we'll need a denial on that, and then we'll shift it down to that category where they're basically eligible.
Yeah, they, they can reapply again later, depending on what happens.
And sure.
Later on this year.
You can do that, if you want to do the bubble testing trailer denial, so we can just get those off the books right now, so.
Yeah, because I'm not, if something happens and we need to reapply, they've got the application there, so probably change the date on it if something would change.
Right.
Yeah, we'll handle that one as well, if that's your decision.
Community testing is just to find out if it's in your community, and you know damn well it is, so it doesn't make any sense to do that, so. So we can deny that one and then deny the...
Trailer.
Which one is it, baby?
There it is, it's on the top of it.
E O seven is one.
Yeah.
That's for the trailer.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I'd like to leave that on there.
Just leave it on there, and if they have something change...
The mobile testing unit, the trailer.
Right.
But we're, I thought we were talking about the...
There's another one, E O two six three eight is the one for the two-day testing.
Oh, okay. Move that we deny E dash zero two six three eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we just want to see if they can maybe find a trailer they can get in a shorter amount of time.
Yeah, I just did a little bit of research. There's all kinds of them out there. Might not be a trailer, but it might be an RV. I mean, but I don't know what kind of specs that they need, but, I mean, whether it's a trailer or it's an RV, I mean, you still gotta have something to pull it, so.
Do you want me to go ahead and go back to them and ask them to update their, do a new application, just something that can be received quicker or something like that?
No, that would be an idea, something that...
Do they have specifics on that?
Maybe just see, see what options there are.
I mean, can we just modify the application if need be?
We can, yes.
So see what they can find, and then we can modify it or...
Okay.
I guess ask them if they're interested in finding something that they can do a quicker turnaround on, and if they're not, then we can deny it once we have that answer.
Okay.
But if they say, yeah, we'll see what we can find, then let's, we can leave it on there for a time, man. I'm fine with that.
Okay, I will go back to them and ask them those questions.
Didn't we have something with the schools, and we're gonna go back to the private public stuff?
Well, I think you kind of took care of it by doing Lincoln at the twenty-five thousand. So, but yeah, the private ones, you may want to address that. Julie, do you want to talk about that, or do you want to go over the budget, or how do you want to, what's the next step? Are we done?
Yeah, I think we've kind of touched on, I'll just touch on really briefly, the allocation document. I think we've essentially touched on that. You can see the first sheet is, I'm gonna just talk to the current allocation category. You could see there the reimbursed public school now for private schools, so there's the total of a million dollars. And kind of just taking it all the way across, you can see for other organizations there as well. So when you look at what's been approved prior to today and then the remaining allocations below, and we'll continue to keep this updated. We'll provide this every week on Tuesdays. We probably won't update it twice a week just for efficiency, but that way we'll continue to know where we're at. On the second sheet, you'll see, which is the kind of internal county items, which, broken out by different departments, what we call the unallocated portion, which gets us to the total of three point one million. We have had the approvals, as you'll see below, which leaves us with the remaining balances, again, starting at EMS at about twenty-two thousand, you know, all the way over to a point of one point eight million that is still remaining available internally, as well as the contingency, as we talked about. So overall, there's about six point six million, and that was prior to today, so we'll get that updated, and then we'll just continue forward from here. And that was prior to today, so we'll get that updated and then we'll just continue forward from here.
And I will make a note that this, the allocation spreadsheet includes what we pulled back from those private schools that went ahead and gave back that money after they were given the NOS award. The funding recommendation spreadsheet still has that included as just something that the commissioners approved. So there is a $19,000 difference there, so that's what that is.
Thank you, Teresa.
And do you guys want to go back to the first point about the methodology of 25,000 for the public higher education versus 5,000 for the higher education for profitable, higher education, private, I should say.
Other private, yeah, they're private, higher education, I think.
What's your thoughts on that? Obviously, they would still have to make application and everything else, so.
If they're trying to stay open and doing things that they need to stay open, I'm fine with helping reimburse them on this stuff.
I think it's a lot easier for the satellite schools to go to online, cause that's where most of them are, are online.
They've done a lot online already.
So I'm not sure they would have that much expenses other than.
Probably have more rents.
But they're keeping moving, so.
Yeah, keeping open, yes.
It's something that they're doing and it has been a hardship that they've been able to adjust with, or adjust to.
Take it at 5,000.
Cause if they actually had in-school classes and then they had to go to satellite stuff.
Then it's different. Are you okay with that 5,000 a month for them?
Yeah, we can do that start with and see what comes up. I don't know if we're gonna get very many of them.
Chris, are you okay with that? Julie, that sounds like your recommendation for that is that, yes, then, for the 25,000.
All right, great, thank you. And then really the last thing, just to let you know, I know we talked about that we are continuing to work through our sub-recipient process. We will be shifting into that phase as well, um, following up with these nonprofits and, um, small businesses and schools and any of those items where, or any of these entities where we've, um, provided funding to go back and, and be sure the funds are spent in the manner that they were originally expected to be. So, um, that, um, will kind of begin to take a little bit more of a focus and we'll, we're gonna keep this on the agenda as well, just so you kind of know what our progress is as we start to fill that out. And other than that, I think that's all I had.
One more quick question on the hospitals doing the testing. Those test numbers were through the end of August or September?
August, I believe.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anything else that you need from us just on an ongoing basis? I know, I know the whole, there's a lot of uncertainty in the economy that would be testing, you know, in general across the country. So if there's anything else you feel like we can do differently or, or help in any way, we're happy to do that.
I'm just apologizing for being such a pain, but I kind of enjoy it.
Just take that.
Well, that's okay too. That's okay too.
I'm honest about it.
Come sit on a budget game.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have two sub-recipient agreements here, so.
Oh, those are the easy ones.
Yeah. So I'd ask you to approve R1 sub-recipient agreement for $18,416. They've already signed it, so.
Who's it with?
Russellville Coal R1.
I move that we sign the sub-recipient agreement with Russellville Coal R1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second sub-recipient agreement is with Public Water District number four for $4100. And that's for you to approve that and sign it.
Move that we sign the sub-recipient agreement with Coal Water District number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
No, um, I'd just like you guys to think about, and I can add, um, Harry too, that next year, we do like the idea of having Tuesday, Thursday meetings. And it seems to be working out good with, um, stuff on the agenda. And since we're putting all the calendars and holidays on there, we'd like to go ahead and keep scheduling on Tuesdays and Thursdays if that's okay.
We can do Thursdays at 8 o'clock.
And well, and I'd like to do it at the same time.
We used to do Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, didn't we?
Yes, Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
And then we'd just be days when they had one thing on the agenda and then we had to stop if they were gonna come up here, so then we went to two.
Well, we don't have anything on Thursday. We could always just.
Yeah, think about it.
I'm fine with it. I've said that before. It's around noon. I get a little cranky and hungry, so. We don't get much passed at that.
Noon.
We'd just like you guys to think about it and let, let us know, cause we'd like to get the agendas flowing for next year.
Are you gonna keep what, doing an 8 o'clock meeting on Thursday?
I'd like to change both to 8:30. Keep them the same. 8:30 or 9?
Oh, just, just.
What'd you say, noon? Oh, Lynn, don't rub it in.
Yeah, don't rub it in.
Somebody's retiring again.
Okay, well, just think about it and let us know.
I'm fine with it, cause we've been having a lot of stuff like this. I don't have a problem with it. I even said that before when we filed stuff on it.
Okay.
Just don't care.
Anything else before we go on to close session? I got a letter yesterday from DNR on the Kaseki Shoe Factory at 1101 East Capital. And the JB Brun Shoe Company at 627 West McCarty. As dear Commissioner Bushman, both of these have, uh, are being considered, uh, by the Missouri Advisory Council on Historic Preservation for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. So anyway. Here, Lynn.
I've got all them ready.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I got your court order too, so they just landed here.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
Can I make a motion? We go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. Discuss following existing or proposed security systems, Section 610-02119.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
How do I know which one of these are the farthest away from?